Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the May 11th City Council Study Session. We'd like to excuse Councilmember Thompson and Glover, who are unavailable and out of town today. The first item on our agenda is Item 1A, to hear a presentation and provide direction on an overview of the Falcon Field Airport and its economic development and community engagement efforts. We're privileged to have our great Airport Director, Corinne Neistrom, present. Corinne, we're looking forward to getting updated on Falcon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you so much for the opportunity, for allowing me to come here this morning to give you an update on the fun and exciting things that are happening here at Falcon Field Airport. What we're going to talk about this morning are a variety of things, but specifically, we're going to talk about what we're doing today out at the airport and some of the things that we're going to be doing here in the near future. Before we do that, though, I would like to just give you a brief overview of the airport in case you're not very familiar with it. Falcon Field Airport is owned and operated by the City of Mesa. It is officially designated by the Federal Aviation Administration as a general aviation reliever airport. And what that means is that you have the large commercial service airports here in Phoenix, such as Sky Harbor and Phoenix Mesa Gateway, that primarily try to cater to the scheduled commercial airline operators. So the purpose of the general aviation reliever airports like Falcon Field is to provide the services to the smaller private aircraft so that they don't feel the need to fly into Sky Harbor and Phoenix Mesa Gateway, so that those airports can focus on the commercial airline service. Falcon Field has two runways, and we have an FAA air traffic control tower. In 2016, the airport was the fourth most active general aviation airport in the United States. We have over 700 aircraft based at the airport, and in addition to privately-owned hangars, we have 410 city-owned hangars and 397 aircraft tie-downs. So we're a pretty busy operation there. Over 90 businesses are located on the airport, which account for over 1,300 airport jobs. The estimated annual economic impact at Falcon Field and for the entire Falcon District, of which Falcon Field is the nucleus, is approximately $2 billion a year. Safety is a big priority for us at Falcon Field. As you can see from our capital expenditures over the last five years, over $8.4 million has been spent on various safety, airfield safety enhancements, as well as enhancements to improve the efficiency of the aircraft operations, and we are going to continue with those improvements. Our eight-year capital improvement program budget forecast, we're looking at over $30 million of additional infrastructure improvements to the airport. In fiscal year 2017-18, our plan is to replace all of the airfield lighting and signage that will include the installation of LEDs, which will be much more efficient than what we currently have. We are also working in partnership with the FAA and the National Weather Service to install an automated surface observing system called an ASOS. That particular system, once it's put in place, will greatly enhance the safety at the airport because it will provide much more accurate information about current weather conditions at the airport. And of course, our pavement maintenance is ongoing. That is, one of our biggest assets is the pavement, so we do pay a lot of attention to keeping that in good condition. Safety is also important to us in terms of the city and the privately-owned hangars as well. We have, for the last several years, put together a program where we work cooperatively with Mesa Fire and Medical to conduct hangar inspections of not only the city-owned hangars, but the private hangars as well. The purpose for this is to ensure that the hangars and the contents in those hangars are complying with the city code, and that those hangars are being used for their intended purpose, which is an aeronautical use. Very soon, we will begin on a new master plan update. A big portion of this project will be funded with the assistance of a Federal Aviation Administration grant, which will be coming before council here, hopefully, in the near future. We hired a consultant to assist us with this. The purpose for doing the master plan update is because the last update was completed in 2009, and a lot of things have happened since 2009, not only as far as the aviation industry, but all of the improvements that we've been installing at the airport. And so it's time for us to take another look at it. We want to update the aviation forecast for Falcon Field to see where we anticipate our airport going in terms of operations over the next several years. And we also want to put together a new 12- to 15-year capital improvement program that will enable us to get onboard and online with both the FAA and the state in terms of future grant applications for completing those projects. Another part of this particular master plan is going to include taking a look at those portions of the Citrus Groves property that the city is not planning to develop, which, by the way, is most of them. We're only looking to develop a small portion of the Citrus Groves properties, which I'll talk about in a minute. But the trees that are located on that property right now are over 60 years old, and they are reaching the end of their lifespan. And so we need to have some conversations about what we want to do as those trees die. And because there are several options for us to be looking at, what we want to be sure that we do through this process is that we have a lot of public outreach, get public input, obviously get your input as council, as to what we want to do in terms of replacing those trees with either new trees or something else. So, big project, you'll be hearing a lot about it. It's an 18-to-24-month process, but we're really excited about being able to do it. In terms of economic development, there are over 3,000 general aviation airports in the United States, and that's in addition to the airports that provide the commercial air service. I'm proud to say that thanks to a lot of people here within the city, Falcon Field is one of the few airports in the United States that is actually financially self-sustaining. We generate our revenues directly from the tenants and users of the airport. There are no city general funds that are used to operate Falcon Field. Our annual operating revenues are very stable, and I've got a great staff, and they do a great job of ensuring that our operating expenses come in under budget every year. In terms of our outreach and our efforts to promote and develop the airport, we do a lot of that. Few examples of what we do, we attend national aviation trade shows throughout the years to try to attract new businesses to the airport. We also have a very proactive digital media program, and we're going to continue to expand upon that over the next few years. A couple of things that we've done here, especially in the last year, is our new website is up and running, which is very exciting, and we're going to continue to make it even bigger and better than what it currently is. And we're very active on social media and hope to continue to do that as well. Business retention is also a big part of that with our 90-plus businesses on the airport, and so we do work in cooperation with city economic development on a business retention program and to assist and help facilitate expansions of businesses at the airport, which we've actually, over the last two to three years, we've seen quite a few of our existing airport businesses move into an expansion mode, which is very exciting to see. We're proud to say that we now actually have three on-airport restaurants. The most recent restaurant to join the group is Desert Eagle Brewing Company, which many of you know they have a location downtown here, but they worked out an arrangement with the Steak 'n Stone Restaurant folks, and they are actually operating in part of the Steak 'n Stone Restaurant facility. So lots of choices to pick from if you want a good place to come out and eat, come out to Falcon Field. Maintaining and improving the appearance of the airport, we believe, is an important part of promoting Falcon Field Airport to aviation businesses, to new users, and also it's an important part for our citizens. They need to be able to be proud of the airport. And so keeping the airport in a really nice, clean-looking condition is a priority for us. One of the things that we are working on right now, and it's ongoing, it is ongoing, is to work with the tenants who currently have aircraft parked out on a city-owned tie-down, and their aircraft don't look like they're flyable. And so what we've been doing is we've been working with them to encourage them to at least get their aircraft looking like they're operational. And if it's just beyond the point of it not being able to happen, then we're working with them to try to help them find a new place for that aircraft where it's not necessarily in view of the general public and our other aviation users that are utilizing the airport. Falcon Field has an amazing history, and I know that all of you know that, but we also have a very exciting future. And Falcon Field is, as you know, a major economic engine for the City of Mesa. I'm pleased to report to you that we do have a new aeronautical business that we'll be locating on the airport within the next few months. That company is named Precision Heli Support. Precision Heli Support provides helicopter and fixed-wing aircraft maintenance, repair, and overhaul services, as well as a wide variety of additional services such as avionics, switching out radios, basically helping to make aircraft flyable. They provide these services for both private, commercial, and government aviation sectors. Some of their current customers include Boeing, the US government, and Airbus helicopters. And as I mentioned, they're currently located here in Mesa, but they do have a need at this point because of some of the new contracts that they have signed with some of their customers to actually be located on the airport. And so as they move into their expansion at the airport, their business plan includes adding an additional 25 to 30 new jobs here in Mesa. In addition to that, they will be renting the East World War II Hangar at the airport, and they will themselves be investing $400,000 to $500,000 in capital investment improvements to that facility. Additional improvements that you're going to be seeing out at the airport include a new covered wash rack, which we have been visiting with the tenants about this for many years, and it's very exciting to see that it's finally going to happen. This particular facility is scheduled for construction this summer, and we've been working very closely with city engineering on that project. As I mentioned earlier, we're seeing some expansion of businesses at the airport. The Planned Area Development Design Standards that the City Council approved back in 2011 have really been an asset for us in terms of improving the appearance of the airport. And as you can see from the picture here, now, these are actually two separate hangars, but those PAD standards have really enabled us to be able to say to new users and existing users, "Let's dress up your facility," or if you're going to build a facility, "Let's really make it look nice." And if you drive around the airport, you will see some of the benefits of that having occurred. We are anticipating, I should say, it's more than anticipation, they're in the permitting process. Over the next year, there's going to be at least two new hangars that are going to be constructed at the airport, including a business expansion for Falcon Executive Aviation. And then we have other tenants, current tenants on the airport, that are performing substantial upgrades and renovations to their facilities as well. To the west of the airport, as I mentioned earlier, is the Citrus Groves property. This area that is marked in red is actually about 70 acres of those Citrus Groves property that were approved by the FAA several years ago to be used for a non-aeronautical purpose, even though the property is technically located on Falcon Field Airport in the eyes of the FAA. Falcon Tech Center project, we are working in close partnership with economic development on this project. The plan is to develop approximately 70 acres of that land for a state-of-the-art, highly-professional-looking campus facility that will be the ideal candidate for development on that property would be some type of a medical, research, high-technology-related to the medical industry, because there appears to be a strong demand for that type of a facility here in the Phoenix area. So we are working with them on that. As part of that process, this property was actually rezoned back in 2008 to become a planned employment park, so that's what the current zoning is on it. However, in order to move forward with this particular development, there are some few modifications that need to be made to the existing zoning, including putting together a Planned Area Development Design Standards for that property as well. And so we have been working with economic development in partnership to address the rezoning issue and putting together a PAD, which that is slated, the rezoning request is slated to be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board later this month, and they will then offer their opinions on it, and then we, our goal is to bring it before you as the council here in the very near future, in June. In addition to that, back onto the airport itself, we are continuing to move forward with our historic zone improvements, and some of those that are now under design right now are new monument signage that will be installed at that main entrance into the airport off of McKellips Road. And then we're going to be installing wayfinding signage within the airport itself right now, which currently is nonexistent. And so all of this is going to have a City of Mesa aviation theme to it, and so we're really excited about seeing that come forward. Additionally, with the World War II Hangar, I mentioned that Precision Heli Support is going to be doing some improvements, but we, as the airport and the city, had already slated some improvements to both of the World War II hangars. The improvements that we want to do to those hangars are actually to bring them back up to where they look a little more like they looked back in 1941, when they were originally constructed. So some of the things that we, as the airport, are moving forward on, we're going to be repainting both of the hangars, which are in need of painting, and we will be replacing new windows that will be, look like the ones that were originally installed back in 1941, as well as doing some hangar door upgrades. So those hangars are very, very important to us, and we want to just make sure that, number one, they're kept in really good condition, but we also want to recognize that because of their history, we want to make them look like they looked like in 1941. Along those same lines, and as part of our effort to recognize and respect and acknowledge the great history that Falcon Field has, we have continued to add some historic photo wraps on some of our airport buildings throughout the airport. We're going to continue to do that. These are photographs that were taken during World War II at or around Falcon Field Airport, and we're just putting those up around the airport because we think it's a fun way to commemorate its great history. As a matter of fact, we are currently working with the FAA, and they have actually signed off on allowing us to put one of these historic photographs on the air traffic control tower, which we think will be a great entrance and welcome to people coming into the airport. We're also working with Parks and Recreation, as far as Falcon Field Park, to put a few historic photographs in the park, specifically the one that you see here, which commemorates the swimming pool that was built there during World War II, and that was actually funded by Hollywood celebrities and producers for the cadets to enjoy. In addition, we're going to continue to expand our terminal building viewing area. We get a lot of people coming out to Gazuntite. We get a lot of people out at the airport just to come out and watch airplanes, and we understand why they like doing that, because that's a really cool part of our jobs. So our public viewing area, located between the terminal building and the tower, we're going to be doing some additional enhancements to that, which includes putting in a shaded structure over it so they can enjoy the aircraft and not be sitting right out in the sun there, and also some more interactive types of displays about aviation so that our families and young visitors and aviation enthusiasts in general can really enjoy being out there at the airport and have a great experience. Aviation businesses and aircraft operators have a lot of choices as to which airport they want to be at. And so one of the things that we try to focus on throughout the year is telling our tenants how much we appreciate them choosing Falcon Field Airport. So we have a variety of events out there, and Vice Mayor Luna, I know you attend all of them. Some of those events include our annual tenant appreciation barbecue that we hold. We have, in the middle of the summer, we hold an ice cream social for them. We have a holiday season open house for the tenants, things like that. They're just small ways for us to just let our tenants know how much we appreciate having them there at Falcon Field. Now, our fly-friendly program is also still a very high priority for us because we do want to make sure that we continue to be a good neighbor. Over the last few years, we've actually implemented, by that I mean the airport, has implemented 18 strategies to encourage our pilots and users and the air traffic control tower to be very sensitive to noise concerns that our citizens may have. In addition to that, I just want to share with you, most of you know we have a very large flight training academy at Falcon Field, and they take this very seriously as well. As a matter of fact, they have implemented their own noise-abatement procedures that go above and beyond what we have recommended to them in order to also increase their efforts to be a good neighbor. And we have seen our aircraft noise complaints, knock on wood, have declined over the years, so we're hoping that some of these efforts are really actually paying off. But at the same time, when we do get a noise complaint, we do respond to every complaint that we receive. We reach out to the folks and try to listen to and work with them on their concerns, follow up with the airport users if we can, if we know who they are, to remind them to fly-friendly. And we also hold our regular community tenant check-in meetings, which Vice Mayor Luna, you are usually at those as well, to give the citizens, as well as the airport tenants, the opportunity to sit down and discuss their comments about a variety of things, but specifically about noise concerns that people may have, to try to come up with additional ideas or solutions as to how we can continue to be a good neighbor, because that's very important to all of us. Our annual airport open house continues to be a huge success. This last one that we had in March, I think it was, the attendance was amazing, and we had a lot of great exhibits, and I, you know, I thank all of the vendors and all of the airport tenants who participated in that. We will continue to hold those events annually. Our airport tour program continues to thrive. We encourage groups to come out to the airport. We love to show people around the airport, and those tours are given to, I mean, it's the full range, from preschoolers to senior citizens. We just love being able to show off the airport to people. Now, the Copper State Fly-In is scheduled to return to Falcon Field this year. Last year was the first year that they came to Falcon Field. Copper State is a regional aviation fly-in, similar to Oshkosh, if you've ever heard of the Oshkosh Fly-In. And there are aircraft and people who come from all over the United States to come to this event. And it's a two-day event with aircraft, static displays, aviation exhibits, as well as some flight safety workshops that the FAA safety team puts on. And so it's a great opportunity for people to come out and just see a lot of really cool airplanes, once again, come out to the airport. And we're just really excited that Copper State has chosen Falcon Field in Mesa to come back to for another year. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and visit with you this morning, but more than that, I would like to thank you for your continued support of Falcon Field Airport. We could not do it without your support, and I just want to thank you for that, and would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the airport.
Thank you, Corinne. Mr. Luna?
First of all, thank you for a great presentation and for doing a great job at the airport.
Thank you.
We truly appreciate the outstanding leadership that you provide the tenants, as well as anyone flying in, so thank you so much. I also want to thank Natalie for her leadership and city staff and management. Thank you so much. And we also want to introduce Senia.
Yes.
Senia, can you stand up? Senia is the new Assistant Director, is that correct?
She's the airport, new Airport Administration Supervisor.
Excellent. Senia Gorneo.
Gorneo.
Well, welcome to the City of Mesa and welcome to Falcon Field. Thank you so much. I had a question on the environmental study related to Falcon Field Tech Center.
Yes.
Where are we with that?
Okay, and thank you for bringing that up. As one of the conditions, because the airport, the Citrus Groves property is technically considered by the FAA to be part of Falcon Field Airport, they, the FAA has required that before we move forward with any development on the property, that an environmental assessment be conducted on the property, and that EA is in progress right now. Actually, the draft has been submitted to the FAA, and they are currently reviewing it. We're hopeful that they will sign off on it here sometime this fall, so that we can actually move forward with marketing the property. And I might mention in that regard, once all of these approval processes are completed, economic development will actually be taking the lead on the marketing of this property because of the fact that the focus is going to be on the medical research and technology industry, which they know a lot more about that than us airport folks do.
Thank you, Corinne. And just, the Tech Center, I guess it's worth noting that that is a pending zoning case, and we're proceeding. I think it's going to be on our agenda here in the near future.
Yes.
And so I think it's exciting news for the area, and I'm proud that the city's playing a hand, a direct hand in the economic development of the Falcon Field neighborhood. Corinne, thank you for all you do. Let me just echo what the Vice Mayor said. People love Falcon Field. It's always fun to go to an event there and see the overwhelming support and how much enthusiasm and just affection there is in the community for that great institution that has such a great history in our community. Sometimes it's easy to overlook the impact of Falcon Field because it's so big, but then when you hear statistics like you shared with us, 90 businesses, $2 billion in economic impact, fourth busiest general aviation airport out of, I think you said, 3,000 in the country. I think any country, any city would really be very envious of what a great asset that is, so thank you for the great job you've done. I'm excited to see, I love the World War II hangars. I think anybody who's been in those buildings, it's just, really, I'd say they're some of the coolest buildings in our city. So I'm excited to see the improvements that are going to be made. And during the conversation, the most recent conversation about the use of one of those hangars, I know there was a group that was anxious to remain a part of the airport wings of flight. Wings of Flight. Can you update us, were we successful in finding location for them?
Absolutely, yes. Excited to do that, actually. Wings of Flight Foundation did find a new home on the airport. They are, they've entered into a lease agreement with one of the, our ground lease tenants who has a privately owned hangar that he owns. And so they actually are in the process of relocating into that hangar. And so they will continue to be a very important part of Falcon Field Airport, which we have always wanted them to remain and be a part of our airport family.
Great, thank you. I know you worked very hard on that, so I appreciate that. Any other questions for Corinne? Okay, thank you very much, Corinne.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Before we move to the next item, I just need to make sure that everyone who's here knows that we have continued Item 1C on the agenda. Originally, we'd scheduled an agenda item to discuss some CDBG funding. So if you came to this meeting today to discuss that item, I apologize, that item's been continued until next week's agenda. Okay? So moving forward, Item 1B is to hear a presentation, provide direction on the, oh, I'm sorry, I lied. It's been continued for two weeks, till May 25th.
Twenty-fifth.
Okay.
May 25th, that's correct, Mayor.
Thank you very much. So the CDBG item will be May 25th. But we do get to hear from Ruth Geese today to talk about community development and community services. Thank you. Ruth?
Thank you. Let me just get our... Good morning. I am Ruth Geese. I'm happy to be here this morning, Community Services Director, and with me is Lindsay Belenke, our Neighborhood Outreach Coordinator. I'll be providing an overview of, excuse me, of community services and then also discussing our diversity program, and then Lindsay will be talking about our new U-Connect program that we're excited about. So generally, community services is made up of several community programs. We provide a wide range of assistance, education, and resources, which informs and connects residents with city programs and services, and we're proud to do the work that we do for our residents. An overview, we have lots of desired outcomes, many of which are based on our affordable housing and supporting our nonprofits. We are also continually building our community and maintaining quality neighborhoods and really just trying to connect with our community. In essence, everything that we do is continually connecting with our residents to make sure that they know what we have to offer or that we can provide the needs in other ways, whether it be with outside agencies as well. We measure success in many ways. With housing and community development, we're really focused on making sure that we continue to receive federal funding every year, so we need to meet certain regulations, and so their measurements might be tied to more data-driven and making sure that we keep up with the regulations set forth by HUD. With regard to animal control, it's really about continually educating residents about effective animal care. So it's really talking with folks on a regular basis as to what the issues are and how best to address those issues. With neighborhood outreach and diversity, it's really connecting and issue resolution with our residents. A lot of one-on-one neighbor-to-neighbor mediation, lots of calls with, regarding ADA or translation services. So those are the kinds of things that we're working on on a monthly basis. With regard to our volunteer programs, I'm happy to say that in 2016, citywide, we had volunteers help us, and it turned out to be 188,000 hours of volunteer service. So we really do a great job, citywide, among all the departments, to reach out to those that want to give to our community. We are happy to announce that we opened our waitlist earlier this year. We received over 6,700 applications and we served over 11,000 people or households with regard to our different funding programs. And we are expanding our second year of the Love Your Neighborhood program. We had discussed it in detail recently. I did want to note, though, that currently we're working with the What Works Cities. They are providing technical assistance to us to really look at results-driven procurement and making sure that we have what we need so that when we go out for that RFP, we're really going to have the necessary outcomes developed in that. So we're really excited that What Works Cities is helping us with that. Just a quick overview of our funding sources. About 85% of the funding in our department is federal grants. 15% is allocated, only 1% of that is from our ABC funds, that we are happy that our community donates to that fund so that we can in turn give it to our agencies to continue to serve our community. And then about 14% is allocated from general funds, and that includes personnel costs and human services funding. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about our diversity program. So with regard to our community engagement strategies, our Human Relations Board really serves as our liaison to our community. The board recommends policies to eliminate discrimination and prejudice and to promote mutual understanding. The board serves as a public forum for human relations issues. Over the years, the board has made many positive impacts to the community. Most recently, they held their Second Annual Youth Summit, which brought 100 kids from all the schools in Mesa, all the junior high schools, and it was in collaboration with Mesa Public Schools, and it was a successful event, and they will continue to work with Mesa Public Schools next year as well. Mesa is committed to being a veteran-friendly community, and with that, we have a Bets Connect Resource Page where actually lots of people from all around the community, not just in Mesa, really look to that, and we receive calls on a regular basis for help in that area. We also have our Hometown Heroes Program, which continues to be successful every year, and we're happy to help coordinate that with, the DMA really helps us with that every year as well, in collaboration with them. We also work regionally with other entities and other diversity offices throughout the region, and we hold annual events here, pictured here. We had a great unity walk where several of you attended, and we recently had our pride parade where many of Mayor and Council attended as well. One of the main charges of our program is really to make sure that the city is meeting its obligations towards fair and inclusive programs and services as set forth by several regulations, including the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and the Fair Housing Act. And to that end, we wanted to establish a citywide Title VI group so that we have representatives from every department so that we can make sure that all of us are on board and responding to citizen needs as they come up. One of the, I just wanted to finish up before I turn it over to Lindsay. One of the main things that we're going to be working on with regard to that is we're currently benchmarking with other diversity offices in the region and developing metrics on diversity with the help of our Human Relations Advisory Board, and we're going to be creating an internal diversity steering committee to develop internal guides to help resources, to help develop resources for staff as we move forward with our Title VI plan. So I'm going to move it over to Lindsay if you don't have any questions so far.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning.
Ms. Luna, please.
I had a question on your diversity dialogues. I thought those were really successful. Are you planning to do those again and go throughout different neighborhoods throughout the city?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, thank you for that. We did the diversity dialogues in conjunction with the results of the study that was implemented by the Morrison Institute a few years back where we developed recommendations. We went out to the community so that we could get buy-in because we had done a telephonic interview survey, but we wanted to make sure that we captured one-on-one discussions with regard to that particular survey. We always have that as part of our toolkit when issues are coming up and we want to have a sort of town hall style where we can receive input. Most recently, we had a town hall specifically related to mental health issues. That was one of the charges of our disability subcommittee for the board, and it was a town hall style. We brought people from all over the community that wanted to learn more about mental health issues, whether it was to help their own family members or the business community to help work with employees to keep them, get the resources that they need as well. So we do continue to do that in different formats.
Okay. I would encourage you to continue doing that. I thought it was a great format. It's a way to also preempt any potential problems that have, it's possible what's happening in our communities throughout the city, you know, because we're made up of a number of neighborhoods, and to go out there and get a sense of what's going on before there's any issues that emerge, it's a good way to do that before anything does happen. So I would encourage the Human Relations Advisory Board to continue on that process because I thought it was very effective.
Thank you.
You know, as long as Mr. Luna brought up diversity, I was going to talk about it at the end of your presentation, but maybe now's the right time. Council may remember that our last discussion about strategic planning, we identified diversity as one of the topics that we wanted to discuss, but we, I think, were looking for some input on what relevant metrics might be, you know, for setting some sort of strategic goal related to diversity. So at Council's request, I spoke to the Human Relations Advisory Board, I think about two weeks ago, and invited them to provide input on that. So I appreciate their willingness to do that, and I'm looking forward to hearing what they're going to come back with. So thank you for doing that. I also just updated them on our previous efforts at nondiscrimination ordinance and answered questions they had regarding that. But then, Michelle, another topic that I heard you mention a moment ago was our volunteer efforts, and of course, we're all still mourning the loss of our friend, Michelle, but can you update us on where we're at with regard to the city's organized efforts to assist with volunteerism?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We were going to talk about it a little bit later, but we are, we did hire a volunteer coordinator. His name is Brian Goodwin, and he is starting actually on Monday, so I will plan to bring him around in the coming week or so to at least introduce him to the council assistants, and then of course, if you're there, I would be happy to have him pop in and introduce himself. Mr. Goodwin comes to us from Las Vegas. He's been living and working there for the last several years, organizing large volunteer programs and actually developing programs for their Lake Mead Recreational Office and also for a large-scale animal shelter group up there in Las Vegas. He is originally from Arizona, has moved back, and we do look forward to having him on board.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Lindsay, I think you're up.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. So we wanted to give you an update on some enhancements we're making to the Neighborhood Outreach programs. We have, over the last 12 months, really been looking at how we can best engage neighborhoods and residents and how to incorporate technology into our programs. So we really, you'll start to see the name "Connect" come up a lot through our programs. We really like that word and how it describes what we do in connecting volunteers to opportunities in the neighborhood or in the, throughout the whole city, to connecting neighbors to each other, to connecting neighborhoods to the city, and individuals and residents to resources and city services. So we are infusing that name into our programs. As you can see here, the Volunteers Connect will incorporate all of our existing volunteer programs that you're familiar with, and we're happy to have Brian coming on board to really start working on that kind of stuff. We are also changing the name of our Neighborhood Registration Program, so that will now be called Neighborhoods Connect. And that will, we, through that name change, we're also really taking a look at our technology that we use around that. We've done a cleaning of our data, really looked at all our neighborhood maps and how those are working together and in partnership with each other. So we've really kind of overhauled that program, met with other cities, done some benchmarking, and created a nice collaboration with other cities. We're meeting with them regularly now out of that effort, and really are happy to make it easier for neighborhoods to register with us and hopefully engage a lot of new neighborhoods that may not be registered already. And then we are also in the process of creating the U-Connect Program. So this program will be replacing our Building Strong Neighborhoods Program, and we really, we feel like, we've been working on this over the last year, as I said before, we feel like it really falls well in line with the digital citizen engagement focus that's happening right now, too. So we've seen a trend in neighborhoods over the last several years that they're really connecting with each other more online and using technology to communicate with each other. The traditional neighborhood meeting is still happening, and we plan to support that and have a lot of those meetings still, but we realize that we need to make a bigger shift to that technology side and social media and really reach out to neighborhoods that way. So this program is all about that. We do have two different aspects of it. So we have U-Connect Mesa pop-up events, which I'll tell you about in a moment, as well as our digital education piece. So those are our two key components. The pop-up events are going to be, they will be in-person, a lot of one-on-one interaction with residents. We will promote them heavily on social media and really get the word out and make it kind of, hopefully, an exciting piece of our program where we can pop around to different parts of the city. Starting in September, I'm sorry, we plan to offer our first one, and we plan to engage council members at those events. If you'd like to join us, we would love to have you participate. They will be kind of an open house style, two hours per event. The days and hours will vary, so depending on the community where we're holding it and the diversity in that area, we may offer it at a lunchtime event, we may do an evening or a morning. It just depends on where we're holding it and the demographics there. We hope to really share a lot of resources. So Neighborhood Outreach is all about educating residents, and so at these events, we will definitely be doing that. We may focus on how to connect us, how to use CityLink. So how can residents use technology to report things to us and really teach them how to do that? We can incorporate things like My Next Mesa. When that is launched, we can help to promote that through these events. We hope to offer them in one council district per year at local venues. So that might be a local restaurant, it might be a park, it could be in a neighborhood retention basin. It just really depends on, you know, what's happening in each district and where we want to focus our efforts at that moment. We will also be, we'll have giveaways and promotional items and just try to make it a fun way for people to engage with us. We will do some of our traditional door-to-door flyering for those events, so if we choose, when we choose a specific location, we'll invite, we'll do door-to-door flyers for the surrounding neighborhood, and then again, have it promoted on social media as well. So the other piece of our program here is the digital education. We will be creating videos, infographics, a lot of different opportunities for us to educate specifically to neighborhoods and specifically on neighborhood topics. So we may focus on how to register your neighborhood if it's not already, or you may live in a registered neighborhood but not know which one it is. So we're doing a lot of education around that. Mesa City Link, again, tips for organizing neighborhoods and how to connect with your neighbors. Who is your council member? How can you engage with that individual? Submitting ideas, using... Submitting ideas using NextMesa. So all kinds of different topics that we will include, several more than that, just to really educate neighbors on how to collaborate, how to make their neighborhood stronger, how to maintain their neighborhoods, that type of thing. We hope to offer bilingual offerings as well and do fun promotional things, too. We have some examples here. It's Neighborhood Appreciation Week, and we're celebrating with free I Heart Mesa shirts, say something nice about your neighborhood, and tag us online. So stuff like that, where we're trying just to engage people in different ways. We're also really collaborating with the PIO office on this program as we move forward.
Mayor and Council, I wanted to take a couple minutes as well to thank all of you for your continued support of all the work that we do in community services, and with that, we open up to any additional questions as well.
Thank you, Ruth and Lindsay. Mr. Luna.
Lindsay, Ruth, you know that BSN's been very popular in my district. We've had great attendance. So I'm glad that you're moving into the digital realm. Are you considering even live streaming this as we do this, these pop-ups, as you begin to connect your neighborhoods and give those that can attend to actually, you know, stream your presentation live?
Yeah, we've talked about doing that, Vice Mayor, and are definitely looking at various ways for how we can engage people that may not be able to attend that meeting. We're looking at the social media neighborhood sites like Nextdoor and things like that where we could engage with them differently. We also have to work in collaboration with the PIO office and connect with them and use what's available to us, I guess you would say. So we are looking at that and considering that as an option.
Well, again, the BSN has always been very successful in District 5, and I'm always open to do, if you want to do a pilot in my district, I'm happy to do that and alert my residents that we're going to do this, using new technology to deliver information and to get them connected. So I'd be happy to make that available to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Ruth and Lindsay. You know, I've participated in a lot of neighborhood outreach for many years, and I appreciate all the work you do, and the programs you have are really great. Just a couple of questions. Do you have a timestamp that you reach back to the organized neighborhoods and say, what can we do to help you, instead of them contacting you? Is that, or something that you're doing already that I may not be aware of instead of, so you can reach out to them and say, hey, you have a neighborhood meeting coming up or anything that we could help you with?
Yes. So Councilmember Freeman, as you know, we have three outreach coordinators right now, and we all are in constant, you know, constantly thinking about that. And we have our newsletter that goes out to all those neighborhoods, so that's one point of contact. And we'll be incorporating a lot of this digital education and some of our videos into our newsletter and our website and reaching out to our existing neighborhoods to keep them engaged. And we're also, through our registration program, we update our records regularly and are trying to make it easier for neighborhoods to update their records and stay connected to us through that. But we will certainly be proactive as well in reaching out to them.
Yeah. One of your best coordinators, Cynthia, I've worked with for years, so kudos to her.
I'm familiar with her, yes.
No offense.
It's okay. You just don't know me that well yet.
She's good.
Thank you.
So what's Cynthia about?
So we're going to have to share that. We'll have to share.
We all, yeah. And Andrea Alaco, yes. Our needs and love, too.
It's nice to have people fight over you, isn't it?
I think so.
One of the things, just you skimmed over animal control on Slide 4. I was just curious, are you talking about Diane Brady and her group? So awareness and education you brought up and the total number of related service calls for animal control. I mean, do you have numbers like that? I was thinking, well, what's the number one chief complaint for animal control, what they try to do? And then if, you know, a number of years ago, large animal livestock was an issue in our community, and we kind of changed some ordinances there. Just wondered, when you find large animals, do you have a resource to take them to until you find the owner? Or, here comes Diane.
Diane is here to answer those questions for you.
She's a wealth of knowledge, I know. We've worked together for many years.
Thank you. Good morning, councilmembers, and in particular, Councilmember Freeman. Yes, we've worked together for many years. We don't really have an overwhelming percentage of problems with large animals, but when we do, we do have to contact Arizona Department of Agriculture. They want to know what's happening. And we do also have some people that will help us, say we find a goat or something or even a cow or a horse. They will help us hold those animals until we can find the owner or get with Department of Ag to get them taken care of.
Probably, are coyotes an issue in our community? Do you have any calls on coyotes?
Yes. We get tons of calls about coyotes every day. They're everywhere. They're not just out in the desert out east, they're downtown. And with the implementation of a lot of people having their own chickens in their own backyards now, that's an attraction for the coyotes, so that presents a problem. If it's an in-progress situation where the coyote is attacking a dog or chickens or a person or something, we would definitely respond if we're on duty. But mostly, we have to refer those calls to Arizona Game and Fish because they are native Arizona wildlife, and they don't usually respond on those of a coyote just running down the road or out in the citrus grove or something like that. And they don't usually capture or relocate because their philosophy is that we should be adapting to the coyotes because we're in their environment. And they, I did recently meet with the USDA as well about situations like this, and if Arizona Game and Fish were to see a problem area or have a big situation, like in Scottsdale sometimes, they have, you've seen on the news where, you know, there was a pack of coyotes in a park or something like that, then they get with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and then they would remove the animals possibly.
Thank you. What's your number one call for service, do you think?
Usually, dog at large. You know, people reporting a dog running loose, they don't want to see it hit by a car or something. Animal pickups, too, dog pickups, where people actually capture the dog for us and then we pick it up and take it to the shelter. And of course, in the fall and spring, it's very cyclic, a lot of barking dog calls, complaints.
Thank you. I just want the community to know that we have a great animal control unit, and it's working effectively, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you very much.
You know, I didn't see coyotes on the agenda today, so I'm glad I came to the meeting because I didn't know what we did. My wife asked me, should I watch the meeting today? I said, I don't think there's much on the agenda, but coyotes. Unless there's other questions. I have questions concerning the digital connecting that we've talked about. I think is, I think, you know, there's a lot of folks up here that think that's a real priority. And I'm just curious, you know, what platform are we considering using? Is it going to be the city website? Is it going to be the CityLink app? Is it going to be something different than that? Because I know that, I think we're on the cusp of trying to do some, kind of take a few steps forward when it comes to digital interaction in our community. And the community, the digital outreach program that we're getting ready to launch, I think there's a good chance we won't call it MyNextMesa. There's been some, frankly, some better suggestions come up for how to brand that. The Mesa City Link app is great, but I'm not sure that that's, we're going to put all our eggs in that basket going forward. And I'm saying this because I don't know the answers to these questions, but I think we're going to have these discussions, hopefully, in the near future. So I think it's, I just, I'm anxious for you to do it, but I'm also anxious for you to not do it right now until we figure out what our brand is and what our platform's going to be and so that it's done in the most productive way.
Yeah, Mayor, they're in coordination with the whole discussion we're having with the consultants and where we're headed with that. So they are integrated into that with PIO. So they're, whatever we do on the specific outreach that we're doing, kind of to gather ideas about what people would imagine Mesa would be in the future, and this component piece, they're all going to be integrated together. So they've been in conversations with the consultants and the IT folks that are creating the platforms for this. So it'll, it'll be a specific focus on the neighborhoods and the outreach, but it will also blend with everything else we're doing, so.
Great. So that won't happen before the larger city effort?
Yeah, and I think the other city effort really is kind of identifying a broader issue of input and engagement that may be citywide perspectives and themes, where their effort is really neighborhood-specific. So it's a much granular perspective of what's going on in individuals' neighborhoods. So we'll blend the two together, but they do kind of hit, you know, one maybe is a broader citywide theme, whereas theirs is really focusing on a specific neighborhood concern, individual in a neighborhood.
Yeah, I get that. And for example, in my neighborhood, I know that there is a lot of digital stuff going on. It's not city platform, it's more neighborhood-oriented. Some of the sites that you guys, I know, are very familiar with and that you use. Thank you for doing that. But I think there is an opportunity there. If, for example, we do launch a, kind of consolidate our digital efforts around a city app or something like that, I think it would be great to, within that broad app, to have --
Oh, yes. You'll be able to go to all these different locations. They won't be siloed. So that if you have an interest, from wherever direction you come in and you want to go look at something specific in your neighborhood, you can, or if you want to go back out and look at other broader issues related to parks or transportation or public safety, you can do that also.
Great.
So that's underway now. That's all being engineered right now, so.
Great. Okay. Other questions? Thank you very much, ladies. Appreciate your good efforts.
Thank you.
Again, we're, Agenda Item 1C is being continued until the 25th of this month, so our next item is Agenda Item 2, to acknowledge receipts and minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion? Thank you. In a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Next item, Item 3, is information pertaining to the current job order contracting projects. Councils, any questions regarding those items? Hearing none. Next is Item 4, here reports on meetings and conferences attended. I think we just met a few days ago, so nothing new to report there. Item 5, schedule for future meetings and general information. Mr. Brady.
Yes, Mayor, we'll meet again next Thursday, May 18th at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, then, is to convene an executive session regarding the sale or lease of city-owned property located at the southwest corner of Main Street and Pomeroy. Is there a motion to convening an executive session? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are in an executive session.